I am calling this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. I'm Jason Golden Superintendent for Williamson County Schools. And those of you who come to meetings regularly may wonder why I'm presiding over the meeting to start. This is the month where we elect our Board Chair, and I preside over the meeting until we hit that Board Chair election. And then upon that election, I will turn the meeting over to our Board Chair. So with that, I will start with item 1A, Record Attendance. So Board Members, if you would, please record your attendance. There are 11 members present. Thank you. And I do ask our audience, if you would, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag and a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our next item on the agenda is Election of School Board Chair. Board Members, I do want to let you know that from a process standpoint, what we will do first is call for nominations. I will leave the floor open to allow the appropriate number of nominations based on what you as individual Board Members desire. And then I will close nominations. And upon that close, I will speak to the method of the vote. So the time for nominations is open. Do we have any nominations for Chair of the School Board for 2025-26? We have a motion from Jay Galbraith, Mr. Galbraith?
Yes, I nominate Josh Brown.
We have a nomination for Josh Brown. Any other nominations? Mr. Cash, you've buzzed in.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a second from Mr. Brown. Are there any other nominations? Nominations are now closed. With that, Board, because there is one nomination, we will have a voice vote with the motion that Mr. Brown become Board Chair for the coming year. And with that, I'm going to ask for a voice vote. At the same time, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Mr. Brown, you are Board Chair. Congratulations.
Well, Board Members, thank you for, once again, giving me the opportunity to chair this board. I appreciate your confidence. And we will move into our election for Vice Chair. And in like manner, we will open it up to nominations and proceed to a vote once nominations are closed. Are there any nominations for the role of Vice Chair? Mr. Cash?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Claire Reeves for Vice Chair this year.
Thank you.
I second the motion for Dr. Reeves as Vice Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Hearing none, I will declare the nominations closed. We will take a voice vote. All those in favor of Claire Reeves to serve as Vice Chair, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Vote is unanimous. Congratulations, Dr. Reeves. All right. Thank you very much, Board. All right. We will now move into our public comment period. We have 11 speakers who have signed up to speak tonight. So I'm going to allow each person three minutes, up to three minutes. I want to read off three names to start with, so please listen for your name. And then if you're in that first three, be prepared to come up when the person before you is finished. First three names are Ryan Brown, Brad Davis, and David Gibson.
Sir, there wasn't a spot for me to sign up.
The signups are done online and are done by noon of the day of the Board Meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I should have said that you'll please look at the monitor on the podium. That'll keep you track of the time. It'll be, the clock will start running when you begin.
I'm going to yield my three minutes to Brad Davis.
That is not customary. You signed up to speak, so do you care to speak?
You can give it to him.
Why can't I give my three minutes to him? Is it customary or allowed?
Let me confirm with counsel on that.
There's nothing in the rules that would make that happen. So there's nothing in the rules that prevents that to get their time.
I'm going to respectfully decline that request. We've not done this in the past, and I think it sets a precedent that I'm not sure we want to set. We want to allow as many individuals as possible to speak. So if you'd like to speak, you have three minutes. If not, we'll move on to Mr. Davis for three minutes.
I'll move on to Davis, and I guess, thank you.
You guys realize I'm going to have to come back more and more constantly.
You're welcome to come back as often as you like. Let's restart his clock for three minutes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Golden, I want to be clear, I don't want to be here tonight. And I didn't want to be here last month either and publicly share the story of how my daughter was bullied, attacked, and her life was threatened by a fourth grade classmate. But as a parent, I'm having a hard time following your leadership as Superintendent of Williamson County Schools on this potentially life and death matter when it comes to security of our students. When you and I spoke on the phone in April, after I shared my daughter's story with you, as I recall, the conversation shifted from talking about my daughter's specific situation to talk about legal theory in general. Because I know you can't talk about any specific situation, including the one involving my daughter. And I asked you, hypothetically speaking, if a student has documented bullying multiple students, has documented being violent against other students, and has documented threatening the life of other students, what on earth keeps a school system from sending a child who checks all those three boxes to alternative school? And you said, Brad, in this hypothetical situation, our hands would be tied. And I know you said you didn't use that phraseology, that your hands were tied. But I vividly remember you doing it because I then asked you, who's tying your hands? And you said to me, Mr. Davis, these are federal laws. That would be our federally elected officials, our Marsha Blackburns, our Bill Haggardys. I then asked you if you would use your position of influence as Superintendent of the wealthiest school district in the state of Tennessee to make a phone call or send an email on my behalf. And you never responded. I sent nine follow-up emails to you, asking, begging you. You know, you're saying to keep our students safe, it's going to take an act of Congress. And I am just a lone father who is literally trying to get an act of Congress passed. I asked for you to make a phone call for me, and you never did. I have here copies of all of our correspondence from that time. You finally responded to me on August 15th, Friday, August 15th, the day after I signed up to speak at last month's Board Meeting. I don't want to be here, but I'm here because this is the only way I could get your attention, get a response from you. And like, I've got, you know, my friend is a parent in Williamson County Schools. He signed up, and he's concerned about his children's safety as well, and you're not giving him the time. I have another friend, a grandparent, who signed up, took their time to come into this Board Meeting, and you're saying their voices can't be heard. I'm just, I'm sorry that that is the reaction, response that you're taking on such a valuable issue. My time is up. I'll see you guys next month. Thank you very much.
Mr. Davis, to be clear, the gentleman before you who asked to speak had three minutes to speak. He chose not to use his three minutes.
Yeah, but I think we both understand the fact that, like, on his behalf, I could speak. And I think that's not uncommon in parliamentary procedure for time to be yielded. I mean, it's your choice. This is your house. We're going to respect it. I'm not saying it, but I just think it's...
Let's be clear that he had an opportunity to speak. On this one, for the record, he had an opportunity to speak.
Yeah, I get it. I get it. And I yield and I respect it. I just like, it's very hard to get your attention. And voices of parents and grandparents are being silenced about this. So thank you, guys. I'll see you next month.
David Gibson?
Mr. Chair, did we have the volume turned up a little?
Is that possible to get the volume on this? Okay. If speakers can be a little closer to the microphones, we might be able to hear it more clearly. Okay. All right. Thank you.
So could I have three more minutes since we weren't able to hear? I'm asking a question. He said he couldn't hear. He asked for the volume to be adjusted. So may, for the record, may I be able to be given three more minutes from which Mr. Dreggers can speak?
No, sir. Thank you. David Gibson?
It's the same thing. So if you're going to deny a parent and a grandparent, that's the same issue. So, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. I had not planned on speaking tonight. I've known Brad for a long time. He's a good man. He's a good father. I know he means well on this, and I know you guys mean well. And I realize things are really difficult now in government. There are things you have to submit to that you might not agree with. But I just want to say that Brad wants good, and he really wants to make a difference. And I would like to see my school boards support him however they can. I would like you to see him as an ally. He doesn't have some of the pressures and responsibilities you have. I don't have kids in this system. Now, I've had three children graduate from Williamson County High Schools. I hope to have grandchildren in there. Every graduate of Williamson County School System impacts my community with the culture they bring from their school. And I think we're living in a culture where victims' rights are not supported nearly as much as instigators are. I'm not saying you have control over that. I'm saying you have an ally here who wants to help do what he can, who is maybe not bound by some of the things you folks are bound by. And I would love to have you guys embrace that and use that resource. He has incredible energy. He's a very driven man, and he would love to work with you guys. And I hope you see him as a friend instead of as an adversary.
Thank you. Our next three speakers, Brittany Ruiz, Robert Jackson, Steve Midelski.
My name is Brittany Ruiz, and I'm here. Our family has by and large been huge fans of Williamson County Schools, just so you know. Have three kids in school, elementary, middle school, and high. I'm coming before you due to a series of unhandled concerns I have brought before this Board, Mr. Golden, also my children's principals. With the assassination of Mr. Charlie Kirk, I now want my concerns taken seriously. Last year, I testified about the concerns with access to porn, violence, and inappropriate age-related content on school Chromebooks. This year, small changes were made, but it's not fully resolved. The changes still allow my kids to view inappropriate content. One child told me she loves her Chromebook because it's not monitored like her iPad at home. Other districts have banned the use of YouTube and Google, and only school-approved programs are allowed. July 2025, I wrote to Mr. Golden outlining my concerns regarding internet searching not causing alerts to the district until the data is saved and downloaded. Last week, I wrote to my school board members and Mr. Golden about an Indy teacher coming to school on Neon Day with a T-shirt promoting DEI trans LGBTQ nonprofit named Franklin Pride. Indy shared this on social media pages as the first image you see. I have zero qualms with this staff member wearing this type of T-shirt or apparel outside of her work hours, but an employee of the district, she gets paid by the taxpayers' dollars and should not be wearing a T-shirt of this kind at school during work hours. I reported this, and Mr. Golden said it was being investigated. I saw the photo was removed off of social media, but got a conflicting email from Ms. Vicky Hall, saying the staff member did not cause a disruption of learning, so she was not in violation, but also went a step further to lay out that Indy does not even have a dress code policy for its staff. Between the legacy incident in May, the counselor involved moving to Indy, I am concerned that DEI ideology is still running and its implications not being taken seriously. The assassination of Charlie Kirk by a young adult who was radicalized by his local high school and college, and seeing a Franklin High School teacher applauding his death simply suspended, confirms yet again my concern that Williamson County Schools need to get back to being 100% nonpartisan, solely education-based school district. When I checked into the DEI history in Williamson County, Ms. Vicky Hall, the same person tapped to investigate this concern of mine, was accessible to the media promoting her work with the DEI consultant. Is she truly unbiased? Then a year later, Williamson County School was super vocal and quick to admonish Turning Point USA all over social media and to the local media regarding Nolansville High. Williamson County needs to start taking a deep look at how DEI and inappropriate content is still accessible and active in this school. As a parent of this district, I would like to see a hard line on making access to inappropriate content banned and a proper dress code for the school. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for your service to our schools and students. Congratulations on election. My name is Robert Jackson, and I teach United States History at Centennial High School. I teach because I care about preparing students to thrive in a diverse and complex country. Today, when a child grows up, they will work alongside people and for people who are different than them. They think different, they look different, and they may pray different. And that's just because we live in the United States of America. It comes with the territory. We've always been a diverse nation, and part of our story is learning to listen to voices that haven't always been heard, from farmers fighting monopolists, to marchers in Selma, Alabama, and to the cries of the gay community during the AIDS epidemic. Our national progress has come from listening to those who are overlooked. One way we teach students to listen and lead is by modeling diversity in our schools. That means ensuring teachers, administrators, and the school board reflects the fullness of America, providing students with integrated schools, and encouraging critical thinking because we don't raise good citizens by avoiding hard conversations. That's why I urge the Board and the state to reconsider the decision to remove policy aimed at diversifying school staff. We need to continue the work left after Brown versus Board of Education, recruiting and retaining talent across racial, geographic, and political lines. Why does this matter? In March 2024, the State Collaborative on Reforming Education found that Black students make up 41% of the population, but only 23% of teachers are Black. Hispanic students are 18% of the student population, but just 2% of teachers are Hispanic. These are children, students who show up hoping to be seen and understood. A Black student may never have a Black teacher, let alone two. A Hispanic student might never hear their culture spoken with depth or pride, and these are missed opportunities, not just for representation, but for trust, connection, and belonging. An Asian American student might never have a teacher who looks like them or shares their cultural... a teacher who looks like them or shares their cultural perspective. Every child deserves, every child deserves to look at the front of the classroom and think, "That could be me." When the classroom only reflects one kind of experience, we send the message that only one kind of person belongs. And for a nation as big as a statement as "we, the people", then we ought to have a teaching corps as a county, state, and country that reflects it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. It is fun to see some people out tonight. My name is Steve Maidelski. I'm a 20-year gardener and horticulturist. That is correct. Being a gardener isn't a job. Many of you have been out to the garden that my wife and I, Laura, created 22 years ago. When my daughter attended Williamson County Schools, the garden was just a beginning. And now she is 20, working in an amazing restaurant in Nashville because of Williamson County Schools, and I would like to thank the garden she grew up around. I also provided you tonight with a continued conversation. When so many of you were out, there were a lot of ideas about how do hands-on classrooms, garden, and nature come together for kids? So professionally, I've been in like you all have for so many years, a lot of boardrooms, meetings like tonight where experts come up. So, I had a lot of that information already in my mind. So, I put a packet together that has five points that I think really show like what gardens do, what nature does to teach. The first one is the screen issue. Teachers, parents, people of all ages currently have the screen as a other thing to think about. There is scientific data now that shows nature reduces screen time. There is also scientific evidence that proves nature increases physical activity. The biggest thing sometimes for mental health is can students, can parents, faculty find joy? Their mental health. Gardens do that. Nature does that. It allows people to have a distraction. It allows people to see a caterpillar become a butterfly. I have client kids who didn't know that a caterpillar becomes a butterfly. One of my most fun moments of my career is seeing little kids have moments where they learn, not through a book, not through an iPad, but from a caterpillar, who tells them a story that they become a butterfly. So, what I'm proposing to you tonight is we continue the conversation about gardens and nature being classrooms for that child to have that moment of education in a hands-on setting. The other big component of this that completely was great for me as a professional is that both male students, female students have direct correlations. I didn't know that little girls between the ages of nine and 12 typically have a decrease in physical activity, time spent outside. But there was a program done, and guess what? Nature gardening. Those little girls didn't have that same problem. They stayed outside because they stayed in the garden. So, there's amazing opportunity for hands-on science across Williamson County. I'd like to thank all of you that came out, continue the conversation. Hope you have a chance to go over that packet that I'm leaving with you tonight, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers are Emily Delicate, Brent Hahn, and Carolyn Brown.
Hi, my name is Emily Delacott. I thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am a Williamson County Schools mom. I have a senior at Franklin High School, and many of you have heard from me in the past, although I said I was going to make the joke, "Longtime listener, first-time caller." This is the first time I've gotten up to speak in front of you and not just through email. Violence is never okay. Period. No question. Never okay. No one should be physically harmed for their beliefs. I'm here to speak about a Williamson County teacher that I trust implicitly with my child's learning and her very life. I have sent this, my child on trips, overnight trips with her, and I trust her with my, her very life. If you believe the Federalist portrayal of Emily Orbison's social media post, then you don't know her, and you didn't read it as she intended. She's being vilified for a post that was taken out of context and shared without her consent, where she used irony to process the death of someone who once called school shootings, including one that happened here in Nashville a prudent cost of freedom. Ms. Orbison is well-loved. She's respected. She's admired by her students. Her students have received national recognition and host of competitions, and many, including my own, have decided to confidently move forward into health-related occupations because of her influence. And now she may lose her job, not because she ever said anything inappropriate to a single student, but because someone stole a message that she never intended for anyone other than her friends on Facebook to read, "Yes, I know. Nothing's private." She never intended for anyone to read. They took that and sent it to a public news art, news place, and then people in this very room shared it publicly on social media. I want you to know that the only reason that my child knows that that existed, that those comments existed, is because of people in this room. And that's not okay. And I love all of you, and I'm so thankful for what you do, but it is not okay that the only reason students are talking about this is because one person stole this woman's post, and then people in this room spread it, and so more parents know about it. I ask you who did the damage. I am a praying person. I pray for the Kirk family. His death was tragic. It was unacceptable. It should never have happened. I pray for the families that have lost children to the gun violence that he dismissed as a price worth paying. I pray for Ms. Orbison, who's learned a terrible lesson about online privacy and does not deserve the hate and vigil that she's getting that's being spurred on by people like you in this room. We live in a complicated world full with both beauty and terror, and two truths can exist at once. His death was tragic, and his rhetoric minimized the tragedy of others. A teacher should not be punished for wrestling with that. But my child should not be punished by losing one of her best teachers because that teacher's trust and privacy was violated. Violence is never okay. If that's the point, let's make it, but let's do so while showing our students that privacy, fairness, and integrity matter, and hold ourselves to the same standard we expect from them. Thank you, and I appreciate the couple extra seconds.
Thank you.
Good evening. I came here tonight to speak about the comments that Emily Orbison made on the heels of the murder of Charlie Kirk. And I took a look at the Code of Ethics. And these comments are directed at the people who don't believe that Ms. Orbison violated that code. If you haven't seen the video of Charlie being shot, I want you to watch it. I want you to see him get shot in the neck. And I want you to think about this. When the shot rang out, one of Charlie's little girls was there, and she ran toward her dad. She did that because the gunshot frightened her, and she was looking for her father's protection. So, I want you to think about that in the context of the Code of Ethics. And I want you to look parents in the eye and tell them that Ms. Orbison's remarks did not violate that code. Because if you can do that, then your Code of Ethics is meaningless. It's a husk, purely symbolic. And I don't want to hear, "Oh, Ms. Orbison was using irony to spin his remarks back on him." Everyone in this room knows exactly what she was doing. She called him a piece of shit. This is not political. This is decency. Allowing someone like that to continue to be employed, that's political. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I want to dovetail on what the last gentleman had to say. Although we all have the right to free speech, when you're in a leadership position or a mentoring position, there's a cultural understanding that you are a role model that has the ability to influence others. You need to think before you speak. You need to think about the impact your actions will have on others. In this case, the teacher in question did none of this. She publicly mocked the death of an individual who held a differing point of view. Do we want teachers that mock others? Do we want to give the message that only one perspective is correct, and if you don't agree with, with that aspect, then you deserve to be punished? Does this encourage our students to want to weigh and measure each other and be open to different points of view? I don't think so. In 1963, a Democratic congressman read the 45 Communist Goals for America into the congressional records. Some of these goals need to be read here. Get control of the schools. Use them as transmission belts for socialism and communist propaganda. Soften the curriculum. Get control of teachers' associations. Put the party line in textbooks. Infiltrate the press. Get control of book review assignments, student newspapers, editorial writing, and policymaking positions. Eliminate all laws governing obscenity by calling them censorship and a violation of speech, freedom of speech. Break down cultural standards of morality for promoting pornography and obscenity in media. Eliminate any religious expressions in schools as a violation of separation of church and state. Support any social movement to give centralized control over our culture, including education. How many of these goals have been achieved? How many of our children learn about the pitfalls of communism, the positives of family, individualism, free speech, debate of politically charged issues, and the values within the Ten Commandments? We look to you as leaders to have the courage and conviction to set policies that teach our children to search for facts, weigh and measure our, the arguments, and to assume the responsibility of being an informed citizen in this wonderful country of ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final two speakers are Karen Rail and Brandon Ogles.
Hello. Social media. Students across the country are held to extremely high standards for their online behavior. As a parent, I've seen this firsthand. My daughters were athletes in the WCS system and on travel teams. Coaches warned them repeatedly that their social media would be used in scholarship considerations. Before my oldest applied for an internship this summer, we had the same conversation again. Be careful what you post because it can cost you opportunities. And it does. There are numerous cases where students lost scholarships or positions solely because of poor choices that they've made online. A Louisiana high school student lost her scholarship after a private video of her dancing surfaced. A Florida quarterback had his scholarship rescinded for using offensive language in a video. A Tennessee high school cheerleader lost her scholarship when a private Snapchat became public from middle school. This is the lookback that kids have to deal with. These are life-altering consequences for teenagers, many who are still minors, just beginning to navigate the digital world. They are constantly reminded that colleges, employers, and clubs will look at their social media. If we hold students to this level of accountability, it is only fair and necessary that we hold educators to the same, if not higher, standard. Teachers are role models, guiding students not only in academics, but also in responsibility and digital citizenship. An employee's online misconduct, whether posted publicly or privately, reflects directly on our school district. Allowing it to go without consequences creates a dangerous double standard. We've already seen universities take action. UT Knoxville, MTSU, ETSU have all moved to terminate faculty over inappropriate social media posts, and those were professors teaching mostly adults. We're talking about teachers that are shaping minors in our district. Think about how young children view their teachers. Many of us remember when our kids lit up with excitement just seeing their teacher at the grocery store. It was like spotting someone famous. That's how influential teachers are. They spend more hours each day with our children than we do. Their role as models of behavior is as important as any pro athlete or public figure. To allow a WCS teacher or staff member to remain after making disturbing, mocking, or harmful posts about someone's murder sends the message that adults in positions of trust face fewer consequences than the students that they lead. I urge the board respectfully to take decisive action and terminate any WCS employee who shows such poor judgment. Our students deserve role models who meet the same standards that we expect of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the board. My name is Brandon Ogles. I have three students at Franklin High School, a freshman, sophomore, and junior, and one upcoming student that's at Grassland Middle. The reason I'm here tonight is I got some text messages concerning some posts made by one of your staff previously, I guess, end of last week, this weekend. I was first made aware of it Saturday, and I would like to commend Superintendent Golden and his staff for fielding calls over the weekend, as well as I know many, many of you were called as well. And fast forward, I think some of the first time some of y'all met me, I was actually an officer with the Williamson County Sheriff's Department. Back then, there was only one of us, and I got to do security at these meetings for a couple years, back when the most contentious thing y'all were dealing with was rezoning West Haven to Fairview, I believe, which y'all got in trouble for. Anyway, fast forward, I had the opportunity to work with Williamson County Schools at the state level as one of your state representatives out of northern Williamson County. And during that time, Williamson County was the leader in school safety. Many of the initiatives that y'all did here in Williamson County, we mirrored across the state. And by 2020, 21, because of the initiatives you had taken in Williamson County, Tennessee had the largest, I'm sorry, saturation of nearly 84 to 87% statewide of having school safety officers. So, I would like to thank y'all for that. Y'all led the fight, putting our students first across the state, as well as many other initiatives and pieces of legislation. I'm here tonight because I'm very concerned in the posts made by that teacher, specifically because with my time at the state, we prioritized a lot of our efforts towards identifying violent predatory behavior. And it seems like from the post that I, I saw, this teacher condoned predatory violent behavior from, towards an innocent person in a very public forum. And that's concerning. Any teacher that condones a public educate, a public murder of somebody based on their beliefs, speaking their point of view, and that's very troubling. And I'm sorry, I haven't done this in a while. I'm pretty nervous. But I appreciate all y'all being here and all the concerned citizens that came out tonight. And in closing, I just hope the school board will investigate this and do your due diligence. And I'm praying that there's been some mistake made, and somehow this is a hoax because this is not a representation of what I expect from our Williamson County teachers, and I have not seen behavior like this in the past. And I'm just praying there's been a mistake. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to say thank you to all of our speakers. If you were here and you did not get to speak, we would invite you to send an email to Mr. Golden and the board and express any of your views through that, those channels. I want to take a second to thank members of our Williamson County Sheriff's Department who are here, Mr. Meadows, Mr. Britton, Mr. Schoenberger. Thank you all for what you do for this county every day and, and for tonight. Okay. Let us proceed with our agenda. The first, the next item on the agenda is to vote to, for the approval of our agenda. So, board members, please cast your votes on your devices. I'm sorry, we, I've already forgotten that we do this by voice vote. So, do I have a motion and a second? I see we have a motion and a second on the board. I see we have a motion and a second on the board. All those in favor of approval of the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. We will also do this by voice vote. You see the items listed on the agenda. Are there any questions about any item on the consent agenda? Okay, we have a motion and a second, I believe. Is that right? Okay. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. And with that vote, the board has approved the following items. Approval of the August eighteenth, 2025 school board meeting minutes. Board policy five point three one zero on second reading. Approval of E-Plan's Early Literacy Pre-K Teacher Stipends Grant for FY 2026. Approval of E-Plan's IDEA Partnership for Systemic Change K-12 Implementation Grant Year Two for FY 2026. Approval of building modification requests for an LED marquee sign at Bethesda Elementary. And recommendation for field trip fee requests. Okay, we will now move on to our superintendent's report. Before we do that, I'm going to make just one brief comment before Jason begins. Obviously, the last week has been for, has been very heavy for a variety of reasons. And I think it's safe to say it's impacted all of us in one way or another. I asked Jason, we've spoken several times over the weekend and today, and I ask him tonight to address the actions that have been taken with respect to the situation, the post that was made that we all know about and have spoken about, that the public has been communicating about. I've asked him to talk about what actions have been taken in that regard. I've also asked him to talk about the process, what that process will be going forward based on state law and based on our policy. I know there will be questions and comments from the board. My ask is that we keep those to the substance of what was posted and/or the process that we're involved in. And I would ask that we not try to adjudicate this matter at tonight's meeting in terms of any ultimate final outcome. And I think if we need to get into reasons for that, I'm happy to. But my request is that after we hear from Jason, please ask whatever questions you'd like to ask, make whatever comments you feel you need to make. But let's, let's please refrain from trying to adjudicate this matter at this meeting tonight. So, Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, board members. And I want to specifically thank those individuals who came and spoke at public comment. For us, safety is a constant, ongoing effort. I want to specifically thank Mr. Davis for giving us some prompts for some opportunities to continue to grow in that. Mr. Chair, you mentioned specifically the, the issue that came up over the weekend. And many of you who spoke at public comment mentioned that as well. And we, we, we did receive a report on Saturday from a reporter alleging a post from a Williamson County Schools teacher regarding the shooting death of Charlie Kirk. And a quick internet search would reveal to anyone who checks that teachers in many other professions have, in recent days, posted disturbing comments about this tragic violence. These posts have, have been posted across the country. Unfortunately, that has happened here as well. So, over the weekend, that story that was published about the teacher's post on a personal account led us to initiate some work on Saturday and into, actually, this morning. And we responded to some media requests in a statement that we published this morning. And I want to share with you, board members, I know you've already seen it in, in email form, but I want to read it to you as a threshold to our discussion. Over the weekend, the district was made aware of a concerning social media post made by an employee. This employee has been suspended pending investigation, which is standard procedure and follows state law requirements. Expressions that glorify or trivialize violence, especially in moments of a national tragedy, are inappropriate and unacceptable. They do not reflect the values of Williamson County Schools and undermine the trust and unity we strive to build in our community. In addition, board members, as you know, on Saturday, I sent an email to our entire faculty and staff. And we have thousands of staff members, and we felt like, and I felt like it was important to let our, our, our team know how important this is. And we published this following up this morning to the media request. And that reads, everyone, "I wanted to reach out to address the tragic events that have occurred across our country and the world over the past few days and how we, as professionals, react and respond. Across the country, concerns are being expressed over recent comments and social media posts. We are hearing concerns too. During this emotionally heightened time, I want to remind you of what we teach our students. Words matter. As you navigate through the remainder of the weekend and into next week, I ask you to pause before hitting send on an email or make a social media post regarding recent events. Please recognize that this is a painful time for so many people, and professional teachers need to lead the way in empathy, compassion, and decency in how we communicate. Think about how your word choice might affect others in this difficult national time, and as always, treat others how you would like to be treated." So, board members, in addition to that suspension, I wanted to give you a little bit of additional detail about the process. First, the, the state structure for, for teachers allows, in the course of an investigation, school systems to suspend pending investigation. I felt like that was the appropriate first step. It doesn't require it, it allows it. We did suspend that teacher who was the subject of that story from, from their work, and we suspended the teacher without pay pending investigation. The, from a process standpoint, the first step is to notify that employee of the suspension. We notified that employee this morning. Next, we, it, we give them the notice of the issue and then schedule an opportunity for them to be heard with representation if the employee has chosen that representation. That is not yet scheduled, but we will be scheduling that with the employee. Then, at that point, the conversation with the, with the, with the accused will drive the nature of the investigation. What we hear from that employee will influence the next steps in the investigation. And then, after all the information that is available as part of the investigation is shared, either through speaking with that employee or doing an investigation, potentially through computer work or speaking with others based on wherever that, that conversation leads, we do evaluate the, the act. We look at the impact on the school system, and we compare what the investigation reveals that, that employee did to the standards in the code. And that includes the Teacher Code of Conduct, and that also includes the standards for, for discipline of a teacher. And that includes incompetence, inefficiency, neglect of duty, unprofessional conduct, and insubordination. We will go through that process, make sure we do a, a quick and thorough job in evaluating that, and make a decision. After that point, when a decision is made, then the teacher has an opportunity for, for a potential appeal. I won't get into all the details of that. I know Ms. Osbrooks has given you an email with some of that detail. So, Mr. Chair, that's, that's where we stand with, with our approach to it, that what has been reported does not meet Williamson County's values and does undermine the trust and unity we strive to build in our community, and we will go through that investigative process.
Thank you for that. Board members, we can open it up for questions or comments if anyone has, or wishes to be recognized. Mr. Galbraith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jason, I have a question about another one of the, the speakers who spoke tonight, and I don't believe, I think he's not here anymore, but, but he spoke about the, he spoke about the makeup of our staff, and, and so, then the diversity of our staff. And I just, I just wanted to ask you, or maybe you could, maybe this is a Vicki Hall question, but do we make hiring decisions, whether in favor or against, using any of those, any of those factors that he spoke about? Age, race, geographic, gender, political views? I just want to know if, if that's a consideration at all in our, in our hiring process?
I'll give you a clear and succinct answer. No, we do not make decisions based on that. We do make an effort to recruit the largest possible pool of high-quality candidates for our staff to choose from.
So, we don't have any evidence that, that we're not hiring people who come through, come in interviews, that we're disproportionately not hiring people who, who have diversity by whatever measure? That's just, that's simply not a, a factor. Is it more a factor of, it's more a factor of who comes through the doors, who's qualified, who, who presents themselves for candidates? And like you just said, we, we do make a, an effort to, to cast a wide net. I mean, I know you've talked about our partnerships with TSU and some of the other organizations. I just want to make, I just want to make it clear, like, this is, this is not something that we're actively trying to prohibit. It'd be great if our, if our teachers were, I don't think anybody, and nobody has said, I've never heard Vicki say, I've never heard anybody say, or do anything to the, to, to the effect of limiting our diversity. It's just a function of, of how do we, how do we have more people apply that are qualified that we could, that we could hire? Is that fair?
Yes, that is fair. And, and since you mentioned Ms. Hall and invited her to speak, I do want to give her that opportunity as well, if there's anything else she'd like to add related to that.
Thank you. I don't really have very much to add, except that you're correct, that we, we don't have any kind of record, that we are denying hiring opportunities for any of those classifications that you mentioned, Mr. Galbraith. And we do make that opportunity to try to go and find a diverse pool of candidates because we're always looking for more candidates, the best and the brightest.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Driggers?
Last year, I looked into this issue after someone made a comment, and I looked, found the demographics, it's all public information, the background of our students and the background of our employees and the background demographics of Williamson County. In one case in particular, the presence of students was four percent, but the presence of that ethnic group was seven percent. So I was, now, Pacific Islanders specifically, that's a little harder. We're pretty far from the Pacific. But I would suggest a spreadsheet of some kind, breaking down that data. Michael?
Thank you for that. The state report card does include student data based on the state reporting. We'll make sure we give a, a link related to that. If I'm not mistaken, Ms. Hall, the state report card does not include similar data for faculty. It's exclusively students.
I don't think so.
Yeah. We'll make sure we at least get you that.
Mr. Cash?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Golden, I'd like to go back to the teacher issue.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for explaining the process, and we're in the process. There was also another incident where it happened in the classroom. Is that the same process? And just so the public knows, that, that's being looked into too?
Thank you for that. Yes, sir. There was a, we received a report of a discussion with, between a social studies teacher and students, and that is under investigation too. Yes, sir, under that same process, and that includes suspension without pay pending investigation.
Okay. I just have one, excuse me, one other comment. We have three thousand teachers employed for, at Williamson County. We can't let a few disgrace the other three thousand. So when people are on social media and communicating back and forth, we have thousands of dedicated teachers that are abiding by the laws or the rules or the codes of conduct, if you will. And I just want, I just want the general public to know that. But a few, there's always going to be people that say things, they need to be taken care of, whatever, but don't look at all our teachers with that in your mind because they're hard working, dedicated people. Thank you.
Dr. Reeves?
Yes, Superintendent Golden, for the, for clarity for the board and for the public, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but could you provide a general timeline in terms of how long the investig, the investigation could take?
Thank you. I'll speak to, I'll speak to goals, and then, and then I may ask Ms. Osbrooks to speak to end deadlines. When we investigate an issue, we, 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 we address it immediately. If somebody has representation, I will tell you, for practical purposes, that ends up being the, 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 the most significant potential delay in finding the right day. But even in that situation, we'll set a date within typically a week or less to meet and give that op, to give that employee an opportunity to be heard. At that point, depending on the investigation, it could lead to others. I will tell you, my, from an estimate standpoint, we, we try, unless there is some extremely unusual circumstance, to make decisions within a two-week period as a, as a goal in all our investigations. I can't anticipate, and Ms. Hall, I, I, I'm looking at you, I can't anticipate anything influencing that. And I will tell you, the two-week part is because most of our investigations, as I mentioned, are suspension pending investigation without pay. And so, if at all possible, we try to close those investigations out within that two-week pay period. Ms., Ms. Hall or Ms. Osbrooks, can you, can you put, fill in some additional detail?
So, just to be clear, Tennessee state law states that any suspension pending investigation can't be any longer than ninety days, and we do abide by that timeline. But just know statutorily, that timeline is there.
Again, as I mentioned, that's the max.
Dr. Driggers?
Mr. Golden, and maybe Ms. Hall, is there a difference in the process between a tenured faculty and an at-will faculty?
Number one, yes, except I'm going to correct your question just a bit. There is a difference between a tenured faculty and an untenured faculty. Our faculty members do sign contracts, and so there, there is no, if I'm not mistaken, I can't think of a scenario where a, a classroom teacher is an at-will employee. They are, they are, they are all under contract, but a tenured teacher has a slightly different process from an untenured teacher under state law.
What about the teacher in question?
So, to, to Mr. Cash's comment, one teacher, the one that was, who was the subject of the, the Saturday notice, is not a tenured teacher, has worked for the district less than five years. The other teacher that Mr. Cash asked about is a tenured teacher.
Thank you.
And is there value in us giving you the nutshell of the difference in process?
It's very minimal. The timelines that you have already received from me are the same, whether the teacher is tenured or not tenured. I'm also going to remind you that board policy under personnel, we do have a separation practice for non-tenured teachers in policy, as well as a separation practice for tenured teachers. Those ti, both of the timelines are set out in policy, and again, very little difference in, in those timelines. They're all done by state law. So, there is, to Mr. Driggers' point, at-will classified employees. There, that is also in policy, and that will look very different than the process that you'll see for our tenured or non-tenured teachers.
So, Mr. Driggers, Dr. Driggers, there are, there are, there are two policies in Section Five, one of which addresses ten- of which addresses tenured teachers and, and outlines the state process for that, and then the next policy addresses non-tenured teachers.
All right. Does anyone else wish to be recognized? All right. Thank you, Mr. Golden, for that report. We'll move on to new business. There, I should say, there is no board chair report. New business, the first item, we have a series of budget items to vote on, all pertaining to the 2526 budget. The first one is approval of general purpose school fund 09.25 public school security grant in the amount of $855,618. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you all know from the work session, this is the carryover amount for the annual public school safety grant. Much of this is related to construction projects to improve safety, such as lock mechanisms, et cetera. Mr. King is here, if you have any specific questions, but I do recommend approval of this accounting measure.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, we're ready to vote.
The vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Thank you. The item passes. Item number two, approval of general purpose school fund 09.25 United Way Grant in the amount of $59,525. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. United Way, and I want to thank them for this work. It donates every year to Williamson County schools, based on the donations they receive in this region. And the specific grant is for after-school tutoring. So, do recommend approval of acceptance of, of this grant and placing it in the appropriate location in the budget.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, we're ready to vote.
The vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Okay, that grant is approved. Item number three, approval of general purpose school fund 09.25 transition grant in the amount of $220,833. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The state transition grant is a grant for our student support services for students with disabilities who are transitioning and preparing for life outside of Williamson County schools. Their budget, the state budget, is on, is on, 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 on an October 1 budget year. And so, because of that, we do need to roll some of those funds to, to this budget, so do recommend approval of that.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, we're ready to vote.
The vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Okay, that grant is approved. Item four, approval of general purpose school fund 09.25 innovative school models carryover in the amount of $10,234,529. 93 cents. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the grant that the governor initiated just a few years ago for their innovative schools model. We are spending the money to build the new facility that's just on the north side of Franklin High School's campus for what I'm calling our innovation hub, or our innovation center. Because this is a, a hard construction project, we are pacing the, the payments based on the completion rate of the project, and so this money is required to move to the next budget year as we finish that construction project in the coming year. Do recommend approval.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I do have one question. What is the estimated time of completion for that?
Mr. King, you may have an exact date. If I'm not mistaken, it's going to be in the late spring, but I don't have an exact date or month.
Yes, you're, you're correct. That's the ETA right now, but for sure, it'll be open for next, in plenty of time for next school year. But I believe it was late April was the, the last date I heard. But again...
Thank you. Mr. Galbraith?
So, I guess, piggyback on that, in terms of the following fall, and we're registering for classes, so do we have any idea of the, of the programming there? I guess, in addition to, to the EIC, like, how is that gonna, what are, what are we gonna, what are they gonna be the options for, for people? Because I know they can come in from anywhere.
Thank you for that question. And I'm going to try to hit every new program off, off my memory. Dr. Webb, I may, I may pitch it to you. We are including aviation, hospitality and tourism, fire prevention and suppression services, diesel power generation. I'm hitting a snag.
Cybersecurity and artificial intelligence.
Thank you. Okay, I hit all but one. So, that is, that is some, some very specific local market-driven college and career technical education programs. It will be at this location. Every student in the district will have the ability to set in their schedules that work.
And is it, is it all, is it all on, in person, or are there any, is there any online ability to, to kind of remote into that?
Thank you. Dr. Webb, can you speak to that?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Galbraith. Our current programming is face-to-face. There may be some components, especially with the fire science, as students are often seeking in addition to that fire science certification, EMT certification, through dual enrollment with Columbia State. Some of those courses may have an online component, but the primary method of delivery will be face-to-face instruction.
Thank you.
And if I may, Mr. Galbraith, you didn't quite ask this, but I'm going to add this. From a budgeting perspective, the director's position is in this year's budget, and the director is working towards putting those programs together concurrent with a construction project that, that, that is being driven by our operational folks.
So, they're, they're, this, in this school year, so they're getting the program up and running, and that's, that's part of the grant. But next year, it'll just be, it'll, it'll be funded and as part of, I mean, it, it's hard to say that we're, that we're, I mean, we are going to be spending dollars, and they're operationally part of that student-teacher ratio, but, but were it not for this program, we would have been, those teachers would have been, we'd had to hire them elsewhere at some point, maybe driven by, like, all the other schools.
Well, from a ratio standpoint, that's going to be difficult to say in year one because of enrollment. I, I, we are of the opinion that over the course of probably the next two or three years, as enrollment builds up and stabilizes, we'll have a clear understanding of that. I will tell you, just to be as open as I can, chances are, just statistically, because of how we measure student numbers at each school, we will be spending a little bit more on college and career technical education programs in next year's budget than we, than we are this year.
That's fair. But no other, but as far as the construction, it was 100%. We didn't, we didn't spend any other, any other WCS funds. Oh, this is 100% paid by the grant.
Thank you for that. We are making sure that the facility itself is 100% grant-funded. I let you all and the commission know on the front end that we would not be asking for any additional funding for the construction project. We've kept it within that. I got to add one little piece. We, as in any project, you do have a contingency. If there is contingency funding left over, that can actually help us with our, with our day-to-day operations of funding that for the first year.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we're ready to vote.
The vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Okay, the item is approved. Item five, approval of general purpose school fund 09.25 state special education preschool grant in the amount of $677,520. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The state, as you see, has given us that grant for what they describe as special edu, education preschool. It's what we call early childhood, and this amendment places the grant in the budget, so do recommend approval.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. And Mr. Bostick?
Yeah, just a comment. I shared this at the work session, but I wanted to say it here, too. The early childhood program is truly a beautiful program, and my son benefited greatly from it. I can't speak for all of the EC programs that we have around the district, but the one at Fairview is truly phenomenal. Ms. Lucy, Ms. Leslie, Ms. Tia, I know I'm leaving out several of them, but they are wonderful, wonderful ladies who did a phenomenal job with my son and many of the other kids there, and I just, I can't say enough about it. And thank you. Shout out to Dr. Murray, who's here tonight as well, principal down there at Fairview Elementary. It, it's a beautiful, beautiful thing, so I'm happy to vote for it.
Thank you for that, Mr. Bostick. Mr. Chair, I have to mention this. You all spoke about brainstorming board goals next year. I don't know that there's anything cuter than watching the, the early childhood students in the, in the school. Walking the halls, visiting the library, it's, it, I, I hope that you're going to have an opportunity in the next year or two seeing that.
Thank you for those comments. All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we're ready to vote.
The vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Okay, the grant is approved. Move on to item B, approval of the 2026-27 budget preparation calendar. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, from Ms. Rachel Farmer speaking to you at the work session, it's already time for us to set the calendar for the budget. We have that there, and we do recommend approval for that detail.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or comments? Mr. Cash?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since we're going into the budget, I'd like to back up to the work session, the subject that Mr. Galbraith brought up about fees. I've just really been thinking about that, and when we voted that there would be actually no fees, I never dreamt in a million years that the whole budget process for the fees would fall on to the principals and teachers. I have four, I get four emails from four schools, and every one of them, I think except one, is asking for donations all the time. I never thought it would be that way. I thought it was in the goals for the superintendent to search out different avenues of donations, and, and I, I know Mr. Golden has been doing that. But Mr. Galbraith brought up a good point. If we're going to get into this budget, we need to budget that money. It needs to be in the budget. And I don't know where we're going to get it. I know there's impact fee money out there in other areas that could cough up a, a couple of million dollars if they had to. But I think this should be in the budget, taking the burden off principals and teachers, because people hate to continue asking. And I think it's, it'd take a, a big load off the schools themselves. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may respond to that. Mr. Cash, thank you for that. We've already started preliminary conversations about that. It, it, we're at the brainstorming stage, and we'll make sure that we factor that in when we discuss the budget.
Thank you.
Ms. Clements?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, Ms. Farmer, thank you for all the work that you guys do on the budget. I know we've had meetings before, and it's, it's, it's a lot of work, and I'm so glad you're doing it, not me. But I would like, since we're at the beginning of the year and you're starting in on this, I would love to see us try to move our teachers up in the pay scale. I'm not sure where we are this year compared to the others. I know last year, we were, I think, 27th in the state for teachers. And for our county, I'd really like to see us really bump that up and put a focus on that. So, I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Any other comments or questions? Well, just acknowledge that there's an awful lot of detail on that screen in front of us, so thank you in advance for all the work you've already done and that you will do. Okay, we are ready to vote. We have a motion and a second. We are ready to vote.
The vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Okay, the calendar is approved. Item C, board policy for first reading. We have one for first reading, and then several for first and final after that. This one is 3.202 emergency preparedness plan. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you mentioned, this is for first reading. This will go back to the policy committee. It includes a substantive addition that we will conduct an after-action review of an event involving a major incident, a major accident, or a major response at a school or schools as immediately after the event as possible. Just as a reminder, we've had some discussions about timing of that, and, and certainly opening any additional discussions we, we might have at the next policy committee meeting. I do recommend approval for first reading.
All right. Thank you. Can we get a motion and a second? Thank you. Do we have any questions on this? All right. We'll proceed to a vote on first reading.
Do recommend approval.
I'm sorry. I thought you said that, but maybe I missed it. All right, let's, let's vote.
The vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
All right. That is approved on first reading. Move on to item D. We have several here for first and final reading. Mr. Golden, I'm just going to let you, I guess we have to vote for each one separately, so we'll start with 1.901 charter school applications.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Because these are changes per state law, and it's first and final for compliance purposes, I'm not going to give you the detail. Certainly, referred to the discussion we had at the work session, I do recommend approval for compliance purposes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments? All right, we're ready to vote.
The vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Okay, that policy is approved on first and final reading. Next is policy 1.903 charter school oversight. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Likewise, I do recommend approval for this. I do, did want to mention, because we're, we're going through four different charter school policies, we actually do not have a charter school in Williamson County schools. Just want to make sure those who are watching this are aware of that. Do recommend approval of this policy change.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, we're ready to vote.
The vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Okay, that policy is approved on first and final reading. Item three is policy 1.904 charter school intervention and revocation. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This adds a reference to the Tennessee Public Charter School Commission in the process outlined in this policy. Do recommend approval.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, we're ready to vote.
The vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Okay, that policy is approved on first and final reading. The final policy is policy 3.204 threat assessment team. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Likewise, we have a change in the process per state law. Do recommend approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I, did I hit the wrong one?
I'm sorry. I skipped one. My apologies. So, what do we have in front of us? Can you scroll down?
1.905.
Okay.
Sorry, I, I, for what it's worth, Mr. Chair, my comments were related to 1.905.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm the one that messed it up, so we'll go, I'll restate this. We are voting on item four, policy 1.905 for charter school renewal. So, you stand by your comments.
Yes, sir.
Okay. A motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, we're ready to vote.
The vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Okay, that policy is approved on first and final reading now. Policy 3.204 threat assessment team. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Likewise, this is in addition to state law, but I, I felt like it was important to give you guys a little bit better description of that. If you could, Tim, scroll down. What it basically says is that if a reported threat involves the school or the, or the building SRO to go for additional help and additional investigation outside the district, then we shall notify parents of, of the, of that within 48 hours. I will tell you, generally speaking, our practice is that we've actually notified for many other incidents even beyond that, but we are incorporate this, incorporating this into the policy to make sure we are complying with state law. Another- Another piece is that quarterly, I am to report to you how many of those incidents happen. We are working on structuring that mechanism. We're actually going to give you more detail than the state law requires related to those reports, in addition to Ms. Birdsong's emails to you that keep you updated in the moment when those investigations occur. Do recommend approval.
All right, thank you. Any comments? Okay, we're ready to vote.
The vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Okay, that policy is approved on first and final reading. Now move on to item E, approval of the collaborative conference team. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The MOU structure, or the PECA collaborative conferencing structure, includes an annual approval of the management team. For what it's worth, the law requires from seven to 11 of management team members. Likewise, the teachers' associations represented would have the commensurate number. I've included the recommendations here and recommend approval for this year. Final piece I want to mention that was also mentioned at the board meeting, we are currently in year one of the three-year MOU, so this coming year, we will be in year two. It will not be a total review. It will be a limited review based on the law governing MOUs.
All right, thank you for that. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, we're ready to vote.
The vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Okay, that item is approved. Item F is approval of board parameters for the 2026-27 school calendar. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a discussion at the work session regarding the board in recent years not setting specific parameters, and the discussion there led to what I'm characterizing as very positive discussion about how our calendar has been structured most recently. And one of the requests of us was to include in the memo an additional sentence, which I have included in there, which is, "The committee's intent is to keep the basic calendar structure for the upcoming school year." That's the last sentence in the first paragraph. So based on that, I do recommend approval of what's been suggested there in the memo, that we do not have any recommended parameters, but we intend to honor the basic structure that we currently have.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wondered if Dr. Webb could just speak to the, how the past year, we've gone two years ahead, just to help our families with their planning and if we'll continue getting that.
Absolutely. Thank you for the question, Ms. Wyatt. For this past school year, or the calendar committee, it was requested by the board to, in addition to establishing the school calendar for the upcoming school year, to lay the foundation for the school calendar two years out. So we will actually be starting our calendar committee work with the framework that we established last year, keeping the same basic structure that has been successful in the school district previously, so the intention is to continue that practice. Also noted, five bullet points from our conversation at the work session from U.S. board members, that even though you may choose tonight not to set parameters, I have taken notes on five things that we'll continue to discuss. One was the review of inclement weather days and its need and purpose that was mentioned. They're looking at teacher start times to see if there's any way for us to push that as close into August as possible. A review of early release days as part of our conversation. Continue the two-year layout, as Ms. Wyatt just indicated, and my favorite, don't break it. It seems to be working great, so we'll be sure to encourage our calendar committee on those five items.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
The vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Okay, that is, item is approved. Our final item for tonight is approval of the calendar committee membership. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Related, we do have a memo with the recommended calendar committee, and just I wanted to point out that it does include Williamson County schools' parents. We've had a long tradition of including that. Do recommend approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we are ready to vote.
The vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Okay, that item is approved, and with that, we've concluded our agenda, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much.